Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos a nuestro foro de candidatos. Muchas gracias por venir. Sí, está arruinado, pero encontrar un lugar para hacer algo así no es fácil. Y antes de empezar, voy a molestarla, pero quiero que reconozcan todo el esfuerzo que la señora Kim Iglehart ha puesto en poner esto juntos. Mi nombre es John Heberling. Soy residente de Universal City de 22 años. La razón por la que soy moderador es que Kim preguntó si me gustaría ser el moderador. Hice el error de estirar. Así que aquí estamos. No se nos permite comer o beber aquí, pero agua está bien. Y si te haces hambriento, hay agua en la frigüedad. Agradecemos a todos los candidatos que han decidido correr. Solo un recordatorio: este no es un debate. Es simplemente difusión de información. Así que queremos mantener esta noche agradable para todos los involucrados. También pedimos que, aunque sea difícil no hacer aplausos cuando alguien golpea uno de tus botones, si puedes mantener tus aplausos hasta el final, nos llevará a casa antes de mediano. Gracias. AJ y Anthony Schneider están filmando esto. Y están haciendo esto sin costo, solo porque aman su ciudad. Sin embargo, hay una canela de donación si te sientes tan alegre. Así que gracias. Esa no fue su idea. Se rechazaron. Pero gracias, chicos. Lo aprecio mucho. Aquí está el formato básico. Tenemos una serie de preguntas que van a ser preguntas a cada candidato. La única variación es que tenemos una pregunta específica a los dos candidatos de mayoral y una pregunta específica a los cinco candidatos del consejo restantes. Más allá de eso, todos reciben las mismas preguntas. Y luego tomaremos una pausa. Y luego tendremos preguntas de la audiencia. ¿Cómo lo hacemos? Hay una caja en la parte trasera, un pequeño agujero en ella. Y si tienes algo escrito, déjalo en el agujero. De lo contrario, tenemos 400 tarjetas de tres por cinco metros. Espero que eso sea suficiente. Con lápices durante la interminable, déjate de lado, escribe una pregunta y vamos a llegar a lo máximo que podamos en el tiempo restante. Dice en la caja, pero como recordatorio, por favor, sean específicos si su pregunta es para un individuo específico en la mesa aquí, o si es para que todos respondan. Una nota final. La Ley de Cuentas Abiertas de Texas tiene algunas provisiones peculiares que pueden hacerlo imposible, o al menos ilegal, para los miembros actuales del consejo o nuestro actual presidente para responder la pregunta. Si no pueden responder la pregunta sin violar esa ley, por favor, sean gentes. No lo están haciendo para ser evasivo. Lo están haciendo para que no rompan la ley. No estoy seguro de qué tipo de preguntas sería. Solo quería dejarlo en ese lugar. De izquierda a derecha, puedes ver sus nombres. Tenemos a John Williams, nuestro actual presidente. Al lado de él, Richard Edwards, un candidato para el consejo. Adam Sawyer, un candidato para el presidente. Beverly Volley, candidato y actual miembro del consejo de la ciudad. Philip Vaughn, perdón, mi nombre es... Philip Vaughn, candidato para el consejo de la ciudad. Paul Nagerian, candidato para el consejo de la ciudad y actualmente en el consejo. Y al final, Stephen Buck, candidato para el consejo de la ciudad. Así que por favor, denles un buen bienvenida. Como saben, el gobierno de la ciudad involucra a todos nosotros. Así que es maravilloso que estos amigos se hayan presentado, pero también es maravilloso que todos ustedes hayan tomado el tiempo para estar aquí esta noche. Así que tenemos algunas preguntas. El formato es que vamos a comenzar con cada candidato. Vamos a comenzar desde este extremo y ir al otro extremo. Tienen dos minutos para presentarse, algunos antecedentes, educación, experiencia, familia, lo que quieras meter en esos 120 segundos. Cuando lleguemos a nuestras preguntas, tendrán 90 segundos. Tenemos un señal de detención muy obvio para decirles cuándo su tiempo se acaba. Y justo en el interés de todo el tiempo, si pudieran realmente hacer nuestro mejor para mantener esos límites de tiempo, eso sería maravilloso. Así que, comenzando con el presidente Williams, por favor, introduce a ti mismo. Tienes dos minutos para contar toda tu historia.
Primero de todo, gracias por venir. Este es un formato maravilloso para que todos escuchen a estos candidatos. Todos nosotros vamos a discutir algunos de ellos, creo que son algunas de las prioridades que nos gustaría asegurarnos de lograr en nuestra ciudad. Este es yo mismo, John Williams. Soy el actual presidente, como todos ustedes saben. Estoy retirado de la Fuerza Aérea, 25 años sirviendo en mi país. Tres veces en Randolph Air Force Base. Y solo quiero abrir esta noche diciendo una cosa hoy es el Día de los Veterans de Vietnam Nacional. Y soy un orgulloso veterano de Vietnam, y creo que algunos de ustedes también. Es hora de ser reconocidos porque nunca lo hicimos cuando estábamos en... He visto que Universal City creció. He vivido aquí más de 39 años ahora. Soy libre de turismo en Randolph. Y he visto que nuestra ciudad creció y prosperó. Y la razón principal por la que hemos sido capaces de crecer y prosperar es esa fenomenal estabilidad que Randolph nos da. Cuando los momentos económicos eran difíciles en nuestra comunidad, Randolph nos dio esa estabilidad. Y no es solo Universal City, es toda nuestra ciudad metropolitana. Y debido a que somos una ciudad con fronteras, tenemos que confiar en esa estabilidad que Randolph nos ha podido dar durante los años. Y me orgullo de ser uno de los que está relacionado con Randolph porque hablo el mismo idioma. Creo que es crucialmente importante en tu ciudad tener algunos que puedan hablar el mismo idioma y trabajar con ellos. Porque si Randolph fuera, por alguna razón, a perder esa base, habría algunos cambios tremendos en nuestra comunidad. Ninguno de nosotros lo dejará nunca. Lo prometo. Y ya que he sido presidente, continuamos trabajando con nuestra ciudad. Tengo 30 segundos. Está bien, está bien. Lo primero que quiero poder decir es que lo que esperamos en el futuro, ya que somos fronterizos, es la posibilidad de redoblarse. Y tenemos un plan de revitalización de distritos de aviación progresivo que espero definitivamente nos ayudará en el futuro. Y eso es reconstruir esa área más cercana a Randolph. Muchas gracias. Lo aprecio. No tengo tiempo.
Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por venir esta noche. Mi nombre es Richard Edwards. Estoy corriendo para el consejo de la ciudad. Soy trabajador duro. Soy firme. Soy leal. Soy rebelde. Los padres fundadores eran rebeldes también. Y creo que hicieron un buen trabajo. Crearon nuestra forma de gobierno. Nos advirtieron que el gobierno no es nuestro amigo. El gobierno es fuerza. Y es o un ejército tristemente serviente o un maestro de fuego. Thomas Paine, quien escribió Common Sense, dijo que el deber de un patriota es proteger su país del gobierno. Realmente no tengo aspiraciones políticas. Estoy haciendo esto por deber. Creo que nuestro consejo de la ciudad, sus miembros actuales están fuera de contacto. Parecen preocupados con el negocio de la ciudad y un poco desagradables de la gente. Es como si se consideraran oficiales de la ciudad más que representantes electos. Mi posición para correr por el consejo de la ciudad es porque creo que todos merecemos la representación, más que eso, en todas las cuestiones que vienen por el consejo. Siento que debería ser primero la gente. Eso es casi todo lo que tengo que decir. Muchas gracias.
No puedo decirlo por mucho tiempo. Primero de todo, antes de empezar, ¿estás bien?
Sí.
La rodilla se estiró, así que quiero asegurarte que estás bien.
Sí, se sentó en el piso.
Se sentó en el piso. Está bien. Sabía que ibas a levantarte, así que lo aprecio. Gracias a todos por venir hoy. Mi nombre es Adam Sawyer y estoy corriendo para el presidente. Hacer esta decisión ha sido una decisión muy larga y dura para mí porque había otras opciones de las que decidí hacer. Muchos enemigos no me querían correr. Muchas personas en la esquina dijeron, "Corre, hazlo". Quiero una nueva perspectiva. Busco ser un ejército de la gente como presidente. Eso es lo que busco. No te sorprenda, 12:00, a las 2 de la mañana, estoy sentado en tu casa preguntando qué necesitamos. No voy a decir que mi plataforma es la mejor del mundo. No lo es. Pero te diré esto. Esta es una buena plataforma. Todos deberíamos leerla. Se llama Constitución. Todos deberíamos mirarla en profundidad, en detalle. Esto debería ayudarnos a guiar en lo que estamos haciendo. Primero y más, ustedes ciudadanos tienen que ser preguntados. Tienen que ser contados qué significa, cómo hacemos esto. Necesito sentarme contigo y hablarle una y otra vez. Corré para el estado rebelde, llegué cerca. Con eso dicho, corro para una elección especial porque nunca me abandono. Nunca me abandono. No me importa lo que alguien diga, esta ciudad va a prosperar cuando trabajemos juntos. Ya sea que votes por mí o votes por este señor. Tuve el placer de servir con ellos, en el consejo de la ciudad durante cuatro años. Muchos de ustedes los he servido. Mentes brillantes en esta ciudad, pero tenemos que trabajar juntos. No podemos dividirnos. Hay una fracción. Con eso dicho, soy Adam Sawyer. Estoy corriendo para el presidente de Universal City. Dios te bendiga. Gracias.
Bueno, soy Beverly Volley y soy encumbrada en el consejo de la ciudad. Trabajé para la Fuerza Aérea durante unos 30 años. No puedo hablar en ningún momento. Trabajé para la Fuerza Aérea como ciudadana durante 30 años. Y en Rauwelf, en Recreación, en el Ministerio de Relación Militar. Cuando retiré, volví a Universal City. Sentí que estaba en el camino. He ido a Universal City cuatro o cinco veces y vuelvo de nuevo. He aprendido mucho con la Fuerza Aérea y creo que ha ayudado. Aplicé aquí. He estado involucrado con el parque de animales, con los partners de los parques y con la ayuda de la salud. Me mantengo fuera de problemas y eso me ayuda a trabajar con la ciudad. Porque si no estaba... Tengo mucho que decir. Amo el consejo de la ciudad. Amo la ciudad. Quiero ser un encumbrada. Y tal vez es porque las preguntas ya se han hecho. Continúo haciéndolas. Las haré en mis 30 segundos.
Hola, soy Philip Vaughn. Nací y crecí en UC. Usaba conducir mi bicicleta a Rose Garden. Además de unos años en la universidad, he vivido aquí toda mi vida. Ahora vivo mi hogar para siempre en Olympia con mi esposa y dos niños que viven en Olympia. Es increíble. Solo por un par de años más, pero... Soy CPA. Compro una empresa aquí en Universal City. Y mi especialidad es auditar a entidades gubernamentales. Así que viajo al sur de Texas, conversando con los presidentes y directores. Los administradores están hablando de sus declaraciones financieras. Preparo sus reportes anuales. Y hago recomendaciones para que mejoren su ciudad. El verano pasado vi algunos preocupaciones con la ciudad. No publicaban muchas cosas en el sitio web tradicional. Y comenzaron a hacer eso, así que fui capaz de comenzar a revisar algunas de ellas. Y veo algunos signos obvios de que me gustaría ayudar a mejorar. Creo que tengo algunas habilidades para ayudar al consejo y que puedo mejorar la ciudad. Amo la ciudad. Amo todos los eventos. Amo los servicios que proporciona la ciudad. No estoy aquí para romperla, pero creo que es hora de empezar a pensar en cosas nuevas. Si pensamos en cuando la ciudad hace mucho tiempo era mucho diferente de lo que es hoy. Estamos preparando para ser fronterizos. Creo que deberíamos centrarnos en volver a mirar los servicios que proporcionamos y centrarnos en nuestros servicios tradicionales, como la policía, el fuego, parques y infraestructura. Y eso debería ser nuestro enfoque ahora. Algunas de las otras cosas que creo que podríamos cortar y centrarnos en esos servicios. Me gustaría aumentar la transparencia. Como dije, hemos tenido éxito en los últimos meses con la ciudad publicando más información, lo cual es genial. El controlador tiene un programa de transparencia con listas de cosas que recomendaron publicar en su sitio web. Creo que sería algo genial para trabajar hacia. Me gustaría ver más presupuestos con una narrativa de por qué la ciudad quiere el dinero y explicar cuáles son sus objetivos y prioridades con un horario de salarios, niveles de estafas. Y la ciudad ha acumulado muchos recursos significativos que creo que deberían haber políticas en place para lo que se utilizará. El fondo general, el fondo de servicios de agua, el fondo de agua de granja y todo tienen un año de reservas de sus operaciones. Y quiero ver que la ciudad ponga algunos límites a eso. Gracias.
Hola. Gracias por venir esta noche. Mi nombre es Paul Nagerian. He sido miembro del consejo desde hace cuatro años, ahora en segundo turno. Voy a ir a mi tercer turno. He sido residente en Universal City desde 2004. He vivido aquí en Texas en 2000 desde el área de Reno Lake Tahoe. Fue un cambio grande. A veces la gente pregunta por qué lo dejaste ahí, es un lugar hermoso. Bueno, así es aquí. Y luego, una vez que llegué a Universal City, me enamoré de Universal City, la gente, solo la atmósfera. Solo por verla. Comencé a involucrarme con... Por cierto, vivo aquí en la ciudad con mi hija, y estoy criando a mi hija de 60 años. Tengo una hija de 32 años. Sé, no miren tan viejos, pero... Ella es de Oregon. Estoy criando a mi hija de 60 años aquí, Savannah. Ella va a la Universidad Norte-Est. Ella es una estudiante de secundaria. Está en el área de educación, donde es una educación futura, donde ha graduado con un acuerdo de asociación de dos años. Super orgulloso. Comencé a involucrarme con Universal City en 2013. Estoy en HVAC ahora y tenía una pequeña empresa militar en ese entonces. Comencé a escuchar sobre entradas y cosas así. Y me encontré con la ciudad. Comencé a... Me encontré con el Consejo de la Ciudad, la Cámara de Policía Ciudadana, que he sido parte desde 2013. Era un tesoro. Comencé a... En la Comisión de Planificación de Zonas, sirviendo dos temporadas allí. Y luego pasé al consejo de la ciudad. Amo la ciudad. Dije algo sobre el negocio de la ciudad. En lo que me importa, el negocio de la ciudad es la gente. Y me gustaría representarte durante otros tres años. Tenemos un estafado maravilloso en el que confío. Esos son herramientas en el paquete. Tu habilidad técnica ha llegado. Pero tenemos un estafado genial. Y pueden haber algunos cambios, pero estamos en un buen camino para el futuro, creo. Y pido tu amor.
Señoras y señores, buenas tardes y bienvenidos a lo que espero que sea el primer foro anual de Meet the Candidates para Universal City. Un saludo a Kim Iglehart y su equipo UC Smart para poner esto juntos. Espero que esto continúe en el futuro, año tras año, tras año, para que ustedes puedan conocernos, pero más importante, que nosotros podamos escucharlos. Creo que eso es parte de lo que falta ahora, es que los ciudadanos sientan que no están siendo oídos. Así que este foro, esta oportunidad, ustedes pueden escucharnos y decidir si nuestras posiciones, nuestra plataforma resonan con ustedes. Pero también quiero escuchar sus preocupaciones, sus complaintes y también sus agradecimientos, si los tienen. Mi nombre es Stephen Buck. Estoy corriendo para el consejo de la ciudad. Como muchos de nuestros padres fundadores, estoy aquí debido a una asignatura militar. Llegué aquí en 2016. Y viajando por el mundo durante los últimos 34 años trabajando para el ejército, nunca he sentido más bienvenidazado por los residentes, por el estafado en la sala de debate y por los negocios en Universal City. Mi hermosa esposa y yo comenzamos a asistir a algunas de las reuniones del consejo en septiembre de 2021. Y escuchando y leyendo los minutos y leyendo las agendas y asistiendo, comencé a pensar que podría estar haciendo algunas de esas preguntas. Tenía algunas de mis propias preguntas que quería hacer de los presentadores. Así que decidí que esto es algo que quiero hacer. Amo esta ciudad. Escucharán todos mis postos durante la cuestión, pero busco tu confianza en mí para no ser un pegamento para la administración de la ciudad. Tenemos algunos problemas que deben ser resueltos, pero creo que el 99% de esta ciudad está en el camino correcto. Señoras y señores, muchas gracias por su tiempo. Lo aprecio.
Muchas gracias. Bien, nuestra primera pregunta para nuestra mesa. Esta se dirige solo a los candidatos del consejo de la ciudad. Y vamos a variar el orden. Pero con esta pregunta, señor Buck, comenzaremos con usted y trabajaremos hasta el señor Edwards. Pasando por el señor Sawyer y el señor Williams para esta. De nuevo, esto se refiere a la Ley de Cuentas Abiertas de Texas. Ah, sí, señor. 90 segundos. Estoy en el medio. Y ya que estamos pausando, ¿debería la naturaleza llamar como una bandera gritante? Bien. La Ley de Cuentas Abiertas de Texas restricta lo que pueden hacer los miembros del consejo, cómo pueden reunirse, cómo pueden discutir el negocio de la ciudad, etc. Anything outside of a council meeting, by and large, is not allowed by law. Mientras tanto, tenemos seis miembros del consejo que solo tienen un voto. ¿Cómo planeas ser efectivo en defender tu posición si estás en el consejo?
Gracias, John. Estás absolutamente correcto. La Ley de Cuentas Abiertas de Texas impide que los miembros del consejo de la ciudad no conduzcan ningún tipo de negocio relacionado con la ciudad fuera de las reuniones del consejo. Propongo reunirse con los ciudadanos de Universal City el sábado o el domingo antes de la reunión del consejo después de que haya publicado la agenda y después de que hayas tenido la oportunidad de revisarla para que podamos reunirnos y quiero escuchar cuáles son sus preocupaciones relacionadas con los elementos que están en la agenda. Como dije antes, represento a ustedes, disculpen, busco representarlos. Así que con su input, lo tomaré a las reuniones del consejo y defenderé a esas personas que represento. De nuevo, no seré un pegamento para la administración de la ciudad. Seré crítico. Seré bien informado de todos los elementos de la agenda para que cuando estemos en esas reuniones del consejo seré capaz de defender adecuadamente y violentamente a los ciudadanos de esta comunidad.
Hasta ahora, en el consejo de la ciudad, muchos de ustedes conocen a mí. Conocen a mí durante años. Y tengo la tendencia de decir lo que me ocurre. No soy político. No soy político en absoluto. Soy un ciudadano, igual que ustedes, de esta comunidad. Así que cuando miro las agendas, las recibo el jueves, antes de la reunión del martes. Pasan por ellas. Miro emails que recibo y realmente necesito... Este consejo, esta ciudad necesita más input de todos ustedes. Así que no podemos abrir todas las puertas. Y emails, llamadas telefónicas, todas las informaciones están ahí en el sitio web. Lo que sea que puedas darme. Traigo las preocupaciones. Nosotros traemos las preocupaciones del consejo de la ciudad de todos en esta ciudad, no solo en mi vecindario. Son todos en la ciudad. Miro las agendas. Si estoy mirando la propiedad, voy a buscar la propiedad. De nuevo, hablo con la gente y hago preguntas cuando se presenta. Cuando la gente presenta su información en las reuniones del consejo de la ciudad, hago muchas preguntas. Si no tenemos nuestras respuestas, siempre podemos poner algo en la mesa. Si necesitamos más tiempo. A veces he sentido que... A veces algunas decisiones no siempre han sido las mejores. Tratamos de hacerlo todo bien todo el tiempo, casi imposible. Pero lo que sé es que cuando dejo una reunión, he hecho suficiente en cuanto a estudiar, que nunca he renunciado o arrepentido de haber votado. Y continuo haciéndolo.
Bueno, todo el mundo ha dicho que lo número uno es prepararse. Necesitas saber tu trabajo cuando apareces. Si vas a ser convincente, vas a tratar de defender tu posición. Eso es lo número uno. Me gustaría ver que la ciudad extienda. Están haciendo el posting mínimo de agenda ahora, que sale el jueves y el martes. Creo que si pudieran extendirlo un poco más, ayudaría a que todos sean más preparados. También me gustaría que la ciudad usara el software Blackboard que tienen como sistema de notificaciones masiva. Puedes inscribirte. Ahora mismo, creo que lo único que he cambiado en eso es un thread sobre los fireworks. Me gustaría ver que empujen las peticiones de agenda a todos, pero me gustaría tenerlas. Puedes revisarlas. Y cosas como si fuera un contrato de basura o algo así podría ser inaudible para el sistema de notificaciones. Porque es una decisión importante y todos podrían ser notificados. Si quieres venir y hablar, podrías ser informado cuando vayas. Lo más importante es estar preparado. Lo frustrante como ciudadano es que vemos el elemento de la agenda. No realmente sabemos nada de ello. No tenemos manera de proporcionar, ya sabes, un input significativo antes de que la decisión se tome. Así que quiero corregir eso. Quiero asegurarme de que todos reciban la información y no pueden venir antes de proporcionar. Así que eso es lo más importante, estar preparado y seguir tus consejos. Ha sido un pegamento dicho y no quiero decirlo de nuevo, pero tienes que ser fuerte y tener una posición por la que你想站 y estar dispuesto a decir no y votar en minoría si tienes que hacerlo.
Lo hago. Trato de hablar con algunos de los que puedo. Buscar qué es la opinión. Sí, debe estar preparada. A veces haces mucha lectura antes de la reunión del consejo. A veces intento hacer preguntas para ver qué significa. Pero también quiero decir que he estado en una reunión del consejo cuando nadie estaba en la audiencia. Así que necesitamos ayudar a eso. Sí, contactar es lo ideal. En el sitio web, enviar un email o un correo electrónico para contactarte. Leerlos, cuando se trate de llegar a la base, es un papel importante de la agenda. Si tienes preguntas, llama a nosotros. Nos encantaría responderlas. Nos encantaría escuchar tu opinión. Sin ella, no podríamos estar. Y sí, estamos de acuerdo. Siento que algunas cosas pueden ser mejor. Pero sé que pueden ser mejor si tenemos mucha comunicación. Que todos estén seguros. Eso es valioso. Hay tantas formas de decir todo eso, pero estar preparado. Bien, gracias.
La Ley de Cuentas Abiertas. La he leído personalmente, he estudiado en profundidad. Obviamente necesitaré hacerlo porque el conocimiento es la clave para entender. La falta de lo que causa duda, descontento, alienación, causa problemas. Nosotros como gente, tenemos derecho a saber qué está pasando. Un miembro proactivo del consejo debe saber qué está pasando. Nada aparece mágicamente en el computador del administrador de la ciudad. ¡Oh, esto sale en la agenda hoy! Así que... Tengo que ser capaz de llegar y averiguar qué está pasando. Necesito ir a los diferentes vecindarios. Así es como estoy campaigning, door a door. Voy a un nuevo vecindario cada fin de semana. Estoy aprendiendo mucho, pero, ya sabes... Si no sabemos lo que sabemos, qué está pasando en tu mundo, dime, ¿cómo supongo representarte? Así que estoy seguro de que la Ley de Cuentas Abiertas no nos impide realmente salir y hablar con el público, dejarlo saber qué está pasando. Sé que si está en la agenda, no puedes hablar de ello, pero puedo seguir escuchando. Gracias.
Nuestra siguiente pregunta es para nuestros dos candidatos de mayoral. Muy simple, y comenzaremos con el señor Sawyer y luego la señora Williams. ¿Qué cualificaciones debería tener un presidente más allá de lo esperado de un miembro del consejo?
Bueno, primero y más, esto aquí, la reunión de la gente. Tienes que tener esta habilidad. Tienes que tener comunicación. Eso tiene que ser clave. Y tienes que estar dispuesto a escuchar, no solo a tus enemigos, sino a tus amigos. Tienes que estar dispuesto a escuchar ambos lados de la mesa. Ven a un acuerdo y habla con todos. No puedo hacer que mis alas se rafle en la cabeza. Puedo abrir mis bolsillos y trabajar con ustedes. Realmente te puedo ayudar. Y eso es lo que un candidato de presidente debe estar dispuesto a escuchar. Pero necesitamos nuevas perspectivas. Te lo digo. No podemos estar en el cargo durante 20, 30 años. No podemos hacerlo. Porque esta ciudad es fronteriza. Y para que crezcamos, tenemos que crecer dentro de esta ciudad. Tenemos que pensar creativamente, fuera de la caja, hacer que funcione. Si puedo hacer SOPs y presupuestos de Korea a Kentucky, honestamente puedo ayudar con esto. Estoy de acuerdo con mis colegas aquí. Necesitas estar más informado, necesitas educarte. Necesitamos extender nuestra agenda para que las conozcamos más en primer lugar. Y tienes que ser valiente y sabia. Habla. No aceptes solo la narrativa. No aceptes solo la orden. Ver si es correcta para ti. Y habla por tus ciudadanos. Gracias.
Creo que uno de los elementos clave en el office de presidente es seguir a los líderes. Y los líderes no son el consejo y el presidente. Los líderes son la ciudad. Hemos tratado muy, muy diligently durante los años para asegurar que la gente esté consciente de que estamos felices en nuestra comunidad. No podemos asegurarnos de que todos sepan. Tratamos de encontrar lugares en los que informar. Y de nuevo, algunos de nosotros ya han mencionado el hecho de que... And again, some of them already brought the fact that the agenda is 72 hours in advance. That is the very, very first time. If there's a way to change that in the future, to add a little more time to it, it's possible. But you've got to think about the fact that every two weeks, this council meets. Well, sometimes it's three, depending on how long the month is. But the fact is, is that we try to be prepared for it. And going back to the Open Meetings Act, I don't think you... I hope you really understand that the first time that the council sees the agenda is that 72 hours before. And the first time they can discuss anything is at that council meeting. And the law is really stringent. It makes, it's a criminal offense to allow the Open Meetings Act. And so we are really aware of that, all of us are. And it's a critical fact. I think that the main thing you need to know, that a mayor needs to be, he needs to be a cheerleader. He needs to be a bandleader. He needs to be a braver. He needs to be a mediator. He needs to be a facilitator. That, and if it's me or she, needs to be someone that puts the cohesionists together on that council. And I'm very, very proud of what we've accomplished in this community over the last 60 years of our existence. We have grown together. And that's because you are the leader of this world.
Thank you. All right. The next question is for everybody. Start down, Mr. Buck at that end. We'll just work our way down the table. Good luck answering this in 90 seconds. What do you believe are the top two issues facing the city over the next five years? And what do you believe needs to be done to address those two issues?
Thank you very much. I think as I drive up and down Pat Bucker Boulevard and I see the closed businesses, the empty premises, the disappearing revenue from our sales tax. If we don't start to attract and retain quality businesses in Universal City, our sales tax revenue is going to dry up. And it will be a downward spiral that's going to result in increased property taxes for the residents. The city has to have money in order to function, to provide for its citizens. It can only come from one of three sources, generally speaking. From property taxes, from sales tax, or from income tax. Nobody wants to see income tax. So we have to increase that sales tax revenue. We have to bring quality businesses to Universal City. The other thing that we have to do is make it easier for them to come here by reducing the red tape that is the building permitting and inspection process. I've heard from so many residents how difficult it has been for them to get something permitted and then to get the inspection and then the reinspection and the reinspection after that. I want to work with the city manager to streamline all of those processes so that we're not trying to attract them via the EDC, but then punching them in the nose once they get here with the onerous permitting and inspection process. Thank you.
Yeah, 90 seconds is, I picked up about five of that off the bat. I would have to agree with Mr. Buck that first, is businesses here in Universal City being landlocked. We are almost built out. Finding sources of revenue down the road is through businesses. Small businesses is the backbone of this community. We need to keep them here. We need to, again, cut red tape, which we have worked on to make sure that big businesses are attracted here. Again, we don't have any, you know, 35 frontage being landlocked where we are. And we can't, we can't convince these large conglomerates to get in here. They can't see us. So the small businesses in... Also, I would say, which is a sore subject with some people, we're looking at a, right now, revitalization of the aviation district. Very important. We've been instructed, when I first came in, to look at these five years down the road for what we need to do five years. But then they said, Ken Taylor said, something stuck with me, which is, now we need to start looking 10, 20, 30 years down the road. Think outside the box. And that's stuck with me to this day. And when I make decisions and as far as my votes, voting is concerned, that's where I'm looking. Don't know how long, you know, we don't know what capacity that the Air Force base is going to be a few years from now. We need to keep that here, keep that aviation district strong. And as we rebuild it up, we rebuild it from there through the rest of the city for revitalization of all of Universal City in the end. Thank you.
I have a little bit different opinion. I don't particularly like the city forcing any particular types of developments. I think that the city's not necessarily well suited for that. I'm not well suited for it. I don't know what the best business use of the building is. I think the city should be, again, focusing on primary services, police, fire, parks, and infrastructure. I don't think we should be giving out large grants to contracted business that doesn't really bring in property types and sales tax. Just my opinion. We have the third highest property tax rate in Bear County. We can redesign our sales tax, subject to your voting, to bring that money back into the city for street maintenance. There was a hint at the last meeting that the city's going to be asking us for more street funds coming up here soon. And if we're going to have to pay for street funds, all of us are going to go into debt for streets. I would prefer to use our sales tax on that than to give away large grants to businesses. That's just my opinion. That's what I would like us to focus on. I think if we do good services and we have good infrastructure, we have low property tax rates, and we keep our property value high, businesses will come. All the communities around us are beginning to be landlocked, just like us. Real estate's going to be a premium. Businesses are going to be looking for places to go. I don't think that we are the ones that should be picking the winners and losers and which ones we think are the best. I have a problem with the aviation revitalization plan. I think it's a good zoning plan. But I don't think the city should be forcing it. I think we have to consider the costs of what you're spending to try to get that business here. Thank you.
Yes. And can you hear me now?
Tell me if it's very tired.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Yay, that's awesome. Okay. I agree, landlocked, that's our main concern. We think about it every day, talk about it all the time. We do need to just make the best of every little parcel in this town. Businesses, I think we're getting some good ones coming in. I don't know if you know, but Four Kings Bakery and Deli. They made the San Antonio news because of their uniqueness, along with Used Guys. Used Guys, whatever it is. And I hope you've heard of the Gather. They came very recently. It's a brewery with creative, delicious food. It's down behind Bill Miller. We need to foster that. We need to go to them and see them and pay them money for their goods. I also am proud of the more fun. I think more fun and more fun activities brings people to our city. The water park, movies in the park, a lot of those good things, I think, do attract people. And attract people is what we're trying to do. Aviation district is exciting. I've been watching. I haven't seen any force that, that I will fight that. I'm not going to force anybody out of the house if I have anything to do with it. And that's about it. Okay. Thank you for the microphone.
Well, I say the two biggest challenges that are facing us. First and foremost, I'm going to show you a couple of books here. When I was on city council, let's just go with Universal City for the fiscal year approved budget. Let's go with the comprehensive plan. Let's go with all these other packages we're looking at. It's 2011 when I first got elected. The financial report. Read, studied them, looked at them over and over again. Some changes, some modifications, some this and that as we've gone about. I've been accused of not reading them over and over again. I still got them. I still look at them. And there's not much change. You know, Ronald Reagan said it best back in 84 when he said deregulations are key. I think we're trying to be too controlling and getting over it. And we're not asking y'all what needs to take place. We need to come to you and say, citizens, what do we need to do? We're not going to please everybody. Not everybody's going to be happy with what we do. But we can get one good thing right to make this city evolve and do it right. Now, we've already said we've been landlocked. We've already said that. We've already said we can't do nothing. So small businesses is the heartbeat of our foundation of what we've got here as a city. Now, you can't build a bridge paying $5 in gas. So we've got to be creative on how we can take that money and allocate it and make it work. So with that said, we've got all this infrastructure money. We've got to be smart on how we're going to do it. What can we do creatively? Think outside the box, Chuck. That's what's going to take us to evolve within the city. Thank you.
Okay. With only 90 seconds, this is over five years. Okay. First and foremost, in my opinion, we've got four and a half years to research, study, go to blows with the EPA, find out what the nightmare really looks like. How do we get over it? I think it's time that the city develop its own sanitation department so that we can properly take care of solid waste removal without being at the mercy of some horrible company called Waste Management. All right? Speaking of which, well, no, I won't go there right now. That's too obvious. Well, we've got four and a half years left on that contract. We can't get out of that contract. We can't do anything, period, without a major lawsuit. We need to be prepared and we need to be ready. And if it's at all possible, and I think it should be, if we can get our own sanitation department, how much revenue is that going to bring into the city instead of giving it away to Waste Management? That's a good question. Nobody's answering. Just nobody wants to go there. I think we need to go there and not give up until we're knocked out. Other than that... No, that's okay. Other than that, I like the concept of the aviation district plan. What I went through, I've looked at it all the way through phase four. I'm counting 100 houses going to get demolished. And I don't know how many businesses. So unless there's a better plan, I don't like it. That's up to me.
Well, you said top two issues is about 100. So I don't know where we start. But I can give you what I think are, from my perspective, which are some of the most critical issues that we face today. Number one is, I will have to continue to tell you, it is joint base San Antonio RAN. That is the key installation that makes our city go and makes all of suburban cities go. Not just Universal City. We have Congress, Live Old Shirts, all of our communities that rely on the stability, the stability of RAN. That is a key issue. And I will continue to promote that and work diligently, really affirmatively, with RAN. And the second, I guess, to say, what I think is critically important, is we need to continually look strategically. We have a comprehensive plan. Let's do, again, what we're working on it again next year. We've got great consultants that have helped us with this comprehensive plan together. We get input from our citizens as to what they believe are the important issues. We will continue to do that to get your feedback. And we have to just continue to look strategically at what is in store for RAN for Universal City in the future. We can't apply Band-Aids. Band-Aids don't work. A simple, one-time, early fix is not going to work. It has to be a long-term fix. And when you have a long-term fix, it takes a while. And you can't just overnight make things happen. So I, as your mayor, I've been really working diligently at that to try to make sure that we have that plan in place to get to where we are in the future. Because where we are now is because of what people did when you passed. And we don't want to be the... That's what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, it's already been mentioned that we have the third highest property tax rate of the 28 cities in Bear County. And this applies to both businesses and residential property. Our city leaders have said if we attract more business to the city, we can maybe drive that tax rate down. The problem is, a high rate that we already have would seem to make it extremely challenging to attract new businesses here. So how do you see the path forward to getting some property tax relief for all property owners? We'll start with you, Ms. Williams, and then we'll go down that way.
That's a great question. And I know it's on everybody's bucket list, right, to know what's going on. We do have a unique situation here in that we are not blessed with a lot of large, big box type stores which give us tremendous amount of sales tax revenue. Other cities, our system cities have given somewhat to tremendous examples. They have the ability to use the sales tax as part of their budget. Our major impact on our budget is our, is our sales tax. Not sales tax, but it is our property tax. And the property tax is, it's a tough one. And every year, as an effective tax rate comes up, which is basically saying, this is the effective tax rate says, this is the amount of money that would be, that would be raised from the previous year. This is what your effective tax rate is. And we have worked over the years to try to stay within the boundaries of that. There have been times when we've had to go over. We flat out have had to go over it. Because if you want streets, if you want other services and things like that, we have to be willing to bite that bullet. So your council has made that decision numerous times. We have tried to keep everybody's interest in, you know, because money is very important to all of us. I think what happened this past referendum that we had to give sales tax relief, and that's actually property tax relief, that goes over 65, was a good example of that. If you looked at today's paper, there's a couple more coming on our way. The county is going to do another $5,000. And it looks like there's another possibility of over 65 relief in the entire state of Texas. That's what we need to look for. Right now, we are doing the best we can to give you the services that you need.
What was your question? They're all easy questions. With the concept of already having high property tax rates, we're saying attracting more businesses will help us to lower them. But how are we going to attract those businesses when our rates are higher than almost everybody else's? How do you solve it?
Well, how do you solve that? We offer a limited time, some type of tax vacancy. So they're not suffering higher taxes than they would be at some other location. We're bringing up businesses in. I guess the formula says that the taxes don't have to be so high. Other than that, I don't see how. I mean, and there's something else. I feel as a citizen, there is a lot of regulations on us. You've got to get a permit to do just about anything. Are businesses being treated the same way? I mean, we saw what Trump did with the economy by relaxing regulations. If we've got too many regulations on businesses, we might want to give that a thought. Because if there's a reason they're not coming here, either we're too far to get to, it doesn't pay to be here, or it's too expensive to be here, too tiresome, too troublesome. We've got to find out exactly why. Maybe there should be focus groups where the city can find out from different businesses why, if they were coming this way, they would choose another city besides us. Then we know where the problem is. That's all I got.
Well, here's another thought. If the county's going to give us $5,000 now, couldn't they have done it earlier? How about now, all of a sudden? They all of a sudden had money. Wait, we're going to spend it. Have fun with it. We need to champion an effort as leaders of the city with our citizens. Talk to our state representatives. Talk to those other mercenaries who write legislation and makes it happen. Not only that, I've already disclosed the fact of deregulation right and left. But we've got to be strategic about it. We can't just scroll through everything right and left because our code enforcement tries to do their very best. They have a lot of hiccups in it. We know that. But why not us champion an effort to businesses? We've got some mighty fine citizens that are willing to come into the cities that have constraints on them, right and left. They can't bring their business here. Why not? Let's champion an effort for our citizens, saying, hey, come to our city and thrive. Now, we're promoting an aspect of, we've got some businesses that are closed down. We can build up. That's how we evolve within the city. But that's creative outside the box, thank you. That's just smart, common sense, great coming to the table. Thank you.
Okay. On the other hand, you still hear me, right? I looked at my tax paper today. Mine, I bought my house, bought my house at $100,000. It's now worth $175,000. And that's part of the problem, folks. The other thing is, we don't get any help from the state. State doesn't play through the policeman. They don't play through the fire... Fire person. And something, we brought up Mr. Taylor, Ken Taylor, our previous city manager. And he pointed out that we have to pay our fire police and our employees high enough to keep them. We don't want to get training ground where they're going over the search after they've been trained. So we have to pay appropriately. So yeah, the tax values are going up. I do love to cut taxes. I'd love not to do this. But I just can't. But I, I just can't with the strengths put on us. And as the newspaper said, somebody else is going to start cutting more taxes. And then that puts your city in a little bit more trouble. So hang in there, talk to us, and we'll see what we can do. It's all.
There's a couple structural issues with the city that we can improve. One is our sales tax. We only are allowed to have 2% sales tax in the city. We, as a, in 1996, elected to send 25% of our sales tax to the EDC that came out of the city's coffers. So that's $1.5 million a year that we decided to set aside for the business to, for the city to give business grants. If we bring that back into the city, it would cut our property tax rate 16%. What you'll hear is that none of the property taxes go to these business grants, which is a little bit misleading. Because it's true technically that it's only sales tax that goes to the EDC. But when you take money out of the city, that would have been city revenue and put it in another EDC, you have to fill that hole with property taxes. That's why our property tax rate is as high as it is. If we bring that million and a half back in, like I said, that would drop it 16%. The other thing is, I don't think the council takes the tax rate very seriously. It's supposed to be based on your budget. And last year, they raised the property tax rate to the maximum amount that they could without having to require an election, when their budget already had a surplus. But they asked us for more taxes. There was no reason to do that. So we should be taking our budget seriously. We should only be asking for the money that we need to fund our budget. And we're sitting on $2.3 million in our debt service fund that's just sitting there. I came to the last council meeting and asked, I begged them to ask the financial advisor what to do with that money because we have bonds that we could pay off that would reduce our property tax rate. And they chose not to ask the financial advisor that question. So until we use that money to pay off our bonds and use the significant resources we have in the city to help reduce our property tax rate, they're going to be...
Property taxes, you're, we're running at your point, probably at five. I do realize that is a higher rate than the surrounding cities. This is a tri-city area. I take a lot of time going to tri-city meetings, NEC, anything I get to. Again, I don't, I don't want to just harp on the landlocked part of it. But this city is unique in that aspect where Live Oak, Soma have other avenues that you can go to. Texas municipally put out not too long ago, the taxes. For this area, yes, it's a little higher than the areas surrounding us. But as Texas as a whole, if you look at the cities, and please look that up, Texas municipal has put that out. In the cities as a whole, there's some high property taxes out there. We are really not, we are really not super high compared to some other places around. But again, being small like we are, we have to make sure to keep that as low as we can by attracting new businesses. I disagree with my point here, I'm not into mathematics like you are. But our EDC is extremely important to this city. And cutting that back, I think, would be something that would hurt our city in the long run. Attracting new businesses, keeping those businesses, again, is a part of the city. Thank you.
I'm going to keep standing up so everybody in the back can hear me. Every time you guys go shopping at Costco, or Home Depot, or IKEA, you should be getting a thank you note from the residents of those cities. Because you are paying their sales tax into their city budget. Soma pays 19 cents per $100 of appraised value in their property taxes. Universal City pays 58 cents. That's 19 cents versus 58 cents. Why? Because they have all those large businesses. The biggest contributor to our sales tax revenue is Walmart. We need to bring additional businesses and renovate the ones that are already existing here. All this empty space is opportunity that we have missed out on. We bring in the sales tax, we attract the businesses through the EDC, but helping them make renovations, tax abatements are a very good option to keep their property taxes artificially low for five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years. We can work out the deals of that. But the more business we can attract, the more they start providing for the sales tax income to our community, which then results in lower property taxes. More businesses pay more sales tax from the residents of Live Oak and Soma and Converse who come to shop here at Walmart. Higher business, more sales tax, lower property taxes. And the inverse is also true. Thank you. Thank you. Some of you have already touched on this next question and asked the deal with the sales tax. State of Texas, for every consumer dollar, taxable consumer dollar, collects 6.25 cents. And cities have the opportunity to go as high as another 2 cents, which we do. That currently is being divided half to the general fund and the other half between the golf course and the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation. Do you think any of this needs to be changed? And if so, what changes would you make? And just to mix it up, Mr. Sawyer, I'm going to start with you.
All right, thank you. All right. State tax, interesting. Again, I pose back to whatever virtue you're for. When's the last time we sat down with the state? Now, one thing you don't know as citizens right now, this city's split. I'm dead serious. You go Pat Booker, you have 118 and 119. We are literally split. Redistricting just happened. Now, the reason why I'm coming to this right now is we have no equal representation in this city. For years, it has been this way. So when I ask my legislators, "Hey, this 2% I'd like to work with, help a failing or a helpless city that's hurting right now." Literally, what can we do? That's when your state legislators need to come to you and say, "Hey, okay, let's help you." As leaders, we must talk more to everyone out there, including our state representatives. Now, as far as the golf course, we've got a ridiculous budget with it, we know that. We need to beautify it, do what we can to increase it, make it worse on it. We need something in this city as a focus point. Right now, we don't have it. We've got failing businesses right now. So we've got to do something to make this city a destination versus a place where you try to pop. So that, I know it kind of evaded the way, but that's where I'm going with it. We've got to talk a little more.
What, if anything, would you do to change current allocation of that 2%?
Well, I like what Phil says. Cars, try to bring more money to the city before it get away. I would like to see the golf course actually pay for itself. But other than that, I really don't know enough right now to give any high or low.
That's a very, very good point to say. Now, that, I don't think you all realize that, that of that sales taxes, our beloved state, which we all own, gets 6.25%. It's divided up, and I can, let me just give you a simple example of the power of what EDC has been able to put there. And the best example I can give you, can you hear me okay?
Everybody should use the microphone.
Can you hear me standing up? All right, all right. No, a second. That's okay. Yeah, let's not, let's not, uh... I'll try to talk loud, okay? So we don't have to worry about moving this microphone around a lot. When we had the pandemic, what your EDC did in this community was come up with the funds that it controlled to help bail out many of our small businesses, sunk to the tune of $10,000. And many of them, so I think we, I think we, the EDC issued over 63 grants free. They didn't have to repay. This was money that the EDC had control of and they used it to help our small businesses stay alive. You ask them, you ask greener groomers, you ask Four Kings, ask some of our small businesses, small communities, small mom and pop shops, how they survive. And they will tell you, "Thank you, EDC," because that's what they did. So I, I, I think the way the money is being divided right now is very, very good, considering that we only get 2% out of that 8.25.
Mr. Black?
Can everybody hear me even without the microphone? The issue at hand right now is not the question of the 6.25% sales tax that Texas mandates. That goes into the Texas coffers. We don't see that. The question at hand now is the 2% that Universal City has voted to tack on on top of that. And how are we going to use that 2%? I support the Economic Development Corporation and that half a percent sales tax. I think I've made that very clear already. The other half percent going to the golf course, however, I support the golf course being revenue neutral, at least. If there's sales tax that could be going to fund the operations of our city as opposed to going to the golf course, that statistically across the United States, only 15% of the population ever plays one round of golf. The number of people who regularly play golf is even lower than that. Now, don't get me wrong, I support the golf course. I want it to stay. I've played on it myself. I go to the happy hours on Thursday evenings. I want it to stay. But I don't see us continuing to fund the golf course operations solely from that sales tax. I want the golf course to be revenue neutral. It's been here for 20 years, excuse me, 22 years. It was supposed to be bringing revenue into the city, not pulling away from it. So I think the allocation does need to be re-looked vis-à-vis the golf course. And if we can shift some of that percentage from the golf course to funding the roads and infrastructure and the operations of our city, I support that. Thank you.
I'm going to stand up for this one so you can hear me. This subject touches on something that's close, close to me. I used to golf, I don't anymore. But it's really neither here nor there. A long time ago, as you all know, and a lot of you agree on, some poor decisions were made about land swap for that golf course versus what we could have had before. That being said, it was done. That ascent had gone towards the golf court via the mandate of the people at the time. So now we have the golf course. I am a big supporter of the golf course. I absolutely agree with everybody else. I'd like to have that leave a black. That's a huge attract to, we have one in the park of 35, you've got a hotel on there. Getting rid of the golf course now would be short-sighted on anything. Property values would drop sooner or later, probably sooner than later. If you don't like your property taxes now, guaranteed, down the road, that's going to go down. You might not be happy with that and you might not buy your house gone down too. I would like to see that make profit as well. Right now, people are thinking of Justice Golf Course. That is a center, they have weddings there, that has been played up with that hotel. You're going to be bringing more business. The problem is, there's a finite number of rounds that can be played, 144, that's it. So now, think of it as golf. You can do a wedding or you can do a golf event. We need more events there. If we get the golf course, that is falling apart as far as the infrastructure there. It needs kitchen, we need to put some money into it. I'm all for cutting back a little bit down the road, but leaving that without a backup plan, I guarantee, I guarantee that if we can pick it up to get two or three events going at a time, it will be a moneymaker. Right now, it's either one or another. And we're putting away businesses out there, and that is ridiculous. Thank you.
Well, as I mentioned, we have a 2% sales tax. 1% is the general that goes to the general fund that's set in stone. The other 1%, we get to elect what that is, and there's options for it. We pick the venue tax and then another development corporation. The other options are property tax relief, which goes towards reducing our property taxes. You have a street maintenance sales tax to be picked. You also have a crime control prevention district, which would be an option to be supplemental to our police department. My personal preference would be to get rid of the venue tax and the EDC and replace it with a street maintenance and a property tax relief sales tax. The biggest obstacle to that are the people that seem to like the EDC, but there are misconceptions about that. First of all, they think if we get rid of the EDC, then we can't attract businesses with grants, which is not true. The problem that I have with the EDC is the way that they do the grants. They give a lot of money without any consideration for what revenue that business is going to be bringing in. They should be focusing on Chapter 380 agreements where you give them an abatement of the taxes and they add it to the city's coffers over a certain amount of time. And that can be done from the general fund with or without an EDC. The problem is, is we've dedicated these sales taxes to very specific purposes when we don't need to. We can make them more general. And then if we still want to support golf courses, we can. If we still want to do economic development areas, we can. We don't have to dedicate them to that. When we adopted the EDC in 1996, it was getting a very small amount of sales tax. I don't think we ever imagined having the Walmart, towards now, grow to a million and a half. And I don't think we should be giving our city a million and a half dollars a year and asking them to find ways to get rid of that. But rather than come and ask us what they want to do with the money, than we approve what they do with the money, rather than giving them a lot of money and letting them decide what they want to do.
Are we okay now? I will, uh, golf course? I think COVID boosted every golf course in the country because you can play outdoors. And I know that we've got more golfers now than we've had in a long time. Will it hold? I don't know. Paul stole part of what I was going to say, but yeah, we all know that in years past, they passed up on the forum, gave that away, and made bad decisions. And I fear if we don't have a golf course and if we do away with EDC, I think we're going to be right up there with those fathers of years ago. Uh, I'm hearing some good, interesting things about EDC that I think we could do. But it does help, and I'll mention The Gather again. The Gather, we've had this refurbished a building. And the Economic Development Company helped them do that. They're already making money. So I, I know they lost, but it's, we just need to think about it and talk about it long and hard. Okay? Thanks.
All right, thank you. Last question, and it's a shorty. We'll start with you, Ms. Ollie, we'll go back that way this time. What would you do to attract more consumers from Universal City?
Of course, okay. More consumers. Well, for one, I think we need to support our businesses in-house. All of us need to think, I do this when I need to buy something, can I get in the city first? We need to consider that. Attract more businesses? I think we're kind of on the way with that. I have a theory that with 35 being clogged up, more and more people are going to come up, 78, and then Pat Booker, and then go to 35. I think we just need to keep building the businesses and I think it would be pretty good once we get that established. The businesses realize how busy Pat Booker is, and I know you know how busy Pat Booker is.
I'm a little bit of broke record, but again, I think we focus on our core of the city. We do police, fire, we do infrastructure well, we do parks. And I think the businesses will come and so will we. If we, if we don't look very good, people aren't going to come. But if we do the right things, we make our city nice, people are going to like that. Which is my opinion. I don't think we should be trying to engineer it too much. When we start doing that, and we start spending money in weird ways and trying to make that happen, I don't think it's fit wisely.
I think, again, starting with revitalization of the Aviation District, which is long, I believe overdue. We used to, we used to start beautifying the city from the 35 area over. And I see revitalization from Aviation District starting to pick up from there and bringing it back into the city. I also think as far as championing businesses out here, I do agree with Mr. Vaughn. Keeping those services, fire, I, I, police, citizens' police academy. I'm telling you, if you ever want to know which way my vote's going, I'm one vote out of six. But when it comes to securing the safety and the infrastructure of Universal City and finding services to attract, again, more businesses and people into this city, keeping it beautiful is a major priority. And my vote will always be in that area. And I've asked him before, you guys have what you need. We don't like spending more money and we like keeping that budget down. But if there's ever a time when they say, "We need this," I'm going to be listening to Ollie to make sure that they get what they need, keep the city and the services that we're getting used to as a city going. High-level services.
I think the issue of attracting quality residents to Universal City is not what's at, is not part of the question right now. It's how do we attract consumers to Universal City. So when I think of consumers, I think of the residents of Live Oak, Soma, Converse, Shirts, Sybalo, who are going to come here and contribute to the vitality of this community by spending their money here and contributing that sales tax revenue. So my answer to the question is advertising. If we don't have our name... If we don't have our name out there, then we are selling ourselves short. The Facebook page for Universal City, the official one, not the one that everybody goes to to know what's going on in the city, but the official one could use a lot of work. We need to advertise on our sister Facebook pages, on Selma, Shirts, Live Oak, to bring them into the community, because those are the consumers as opposed to the residents. Again, you're going to Costco and Home Depot and IKEA to buy your stuff. Why not bring them to Universal City to fund our operations? So advertising number one, and having a quality service in Universal City that will cater to the residents, but also to those consumers that are gonna come into Universal City. Thank you.
That's a great question, I mean, a great comment about consumerism. I think you need to be aware of an organization that our city's a member of, as many other suburban cities are. It's called the Northeast Partnership. It was formed back in 1994, but none of our communities had an economic development program. It was not, no one had that kind of money in their budget. So this organization was formed. We meet every month. And what the result of that is, is those cities, let's say a potential consumer might wanna go here or there, buy something, whatever it may be, or a business here or there. If we can't provide the services to them, we don't have the infrastructure in terms of the facility area, the land that they can build on, then we will share it with our neighbors. This is one of the great things, and it's happened over the last, what, 18 years now, is that our communities in the metrocom have shared their wealth. And I mean not wealth, my money wealth. They've shared their wealth of sharing with each other, so that if it doesn't fit in UC, it might fit in Converse, it might fit in Selma. I have an argument all the time with the mayor of Selma, saying that I will give you everything that you want if you give me Costco. But that is not gonna happen. We need to share, and I think that's important, and I think that would use a lot of sense. Consumers trying to attract interior, what do we offer that the other cities do? Don't, nothing, nothing major difference at all. Except we wanna make sure that people know that it's a great place to live, to work, to live.
I'll get up so you can hear. As far as attracting consumers to Universal City, my first concern would be where are we attracting them to? We go over the Jester streets. What do we want all these strangers, these people who don't belong here, don't live in our neighborhoods? What do we want them going through? There's another question. Why do car dealerships pretty much all locate on service roads? Because the more easier it is to get in and out of where you're going, the more attractive that is, rather than having to fight through neighborhoods or go down busy roads. So if we're gonna try to establish businesses that are gonna bring in sales taxes, okay, those types of businesses are what we need to try to locate along what we've got left on 1604. And the people can easily come in, do their business, and go. And then we don't have extra traffic jamming up our roads, or strangers getting lost or driving through our neighborhoods. We don't know what they're doing. Thanks, Lee.
All right. I love this question. As Ms. Volle so proudly hit it right on the head when she said, "We need more fun events." We've got the formula, y'all. The Snow Fest is probably the most brilliant event I've ever seen. Thousands come out. Y'all know that as well as anybody. I've seen y'all, Chris, walk around and smile. Beautiful. Every one of y'all been out there? That's what we need. I was out giving a sign to a lovely citizen, and she told me, "Why can't we do like the Pearl?" Let's set up a little farmer's market or a little event, do what we can. Have these kind of events here. Make us the destination. Quit going outside the city, Pickler's Park or this and that everywhere. We've got the means to make it happen. But the crucial element to really make it a success is communication. And exactly what you hit the head on when you said advertising. Why not us as a city put a little advertising budget aside and say, "Let's promote these events we're gonna do." More so. Do more of them. We need more of them. That's how we attract more consumers in this area. And they come, they wanna be this destination. And thus, our businesses tend to grow. They wanna come be a part of something the community involves. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We will be convened at 5 minutes to 8. Use the restroom, drop some questions in the box, stay right where you are, get some water, whatever you wanna do. This particular card does not specify who it's addressed to, so I'm gonna assume it's addressed to all of you. And we have about 30 cards in here, so we'll keep this as brief as possible. Either way, the goal is to be out of here by 9 o'clock. Got you. So...
John, how much time?
Well, my sheet says 62, so hopefully that's enough. And we'll start again with Mr. Buck down on that end. If we do away with the portion of the tax that covers the EDC, how will we fund the various projects it currently funds?
Well, I think everybody understands that I support the EDC, and you're absolutely right, whoever wrote it. If we do eliminate the sales, that portion of the sales tax that is allocated to the Economic Development Corporation, there is no more Economic Development Corporation. The city, acting unilaterally without the EDC, can offer those tax abatements that we've talked about, keeping their property taxes low for a specified amount of time in order to attract that business. But simply put, without that half-cent sales tax, there is no EDCs.
Can you give me the question?
Yes. I heard some of the... If we do away with the EDC portion of the sales tax, and it was allocated differently, how will we fund the various things that currently is funded?
Well, right off the bat, I'm definitely not in favor of doing that. But with that said, if we did, that could be broken up into many different ways as far as what the citizens want. I mean, you know, if it's something that would have to be voted on, it's nothing that the council can just mandate. That would have to be something that would be put by the people. And wherever you wanna put it, I would say, you know, into services that help the city. But again, I don't have much to say on this because of the fact that I disagree with the fact that the money wouldn't be taken from the EDC. They're an extremely important part of the city. And the amount of good that they've done, as the mayor brought it before, through COVID, the amount of people that, businesses that we're gonna be able to help to keep open during that time was invaluable. And the value that they add to the city now or in the future is just, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to enact that in a New York way. Thank you.
My understanding is the EDC does have some employees and does also fund some events. All of that can be brought back under the city. We're talking about the same total revenue, and we're just consolidating it into giving us more flexibility. By bringing that sales tax into the city, it frees up other money that can be used to fund those employees that are in the EDC and some of their events that the EDC is already paying for. They don't have to necessarily go away. What would go away are the giveaway grants to businesses. You know, the $500,000 for putting improvements into a building are not tied to revenue or what they're gonna bring to the city. That would go away, and that would be the only thing that would suffer. Of the 28 municipalities in the greater Bayreuth County area, 17 of them do not have an EDC. This is not, everybody's doing it, and we have to. There's even cities in the area that have gotten rid of their EDC over the last several years. So this is not something unusual. So if that's something that the citizens want to do, it doesn't necessarily mean we're cutting services other than the large business grants.
I'm with Paul. I can't say it all right. I wanna remind you also that there is a, it is a board, the EDC board, studies these options. People know to go to the board, and they discuss how they need help. So we, I think we'd be better off keeping those people studying what's going on, a specific board. And yes, I know the money could go somewhere else, but this would be good if the board could study it and make a recommendation, which they do.
Well, here's an interesting concept. Sitting here, I've heard from a lot of people that the EDC was distributing grants throughout. Why not, let's get a couple of grant writers on staff? And instead of taking away the funds, let's find the funds. We can find them. They are out there. But we gotta get strategic on how to get them. So this would require staff. Well, guess what? EDC does have some staff. With that said, we've got some other personnel we could probably talk to. We've got some brilliant minds working for the city. Y'all cannot take, underestimate what they bring to the table. So we just have to get creative on it. We don't wanna get rid of some avid, good volunteers. We don't wanna do that. And honestly, they've done a lot for the course of this pandemic. They helped us out big time. I think we can get creative on how to get more to this city. You know, we've got the San Antonio Area Foundation right up the road. They all the time have classes on how to write grants. Get creative, y'all. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so far, I've heard two excellent ideas. Phil Wong and Mr. Sawyer. There's nothing I can add to it.
I'll very briefly. I'm 100% in favor of our EDC. I have seen them in action over the years. I don't know if you're familiar with one of the programs that they do. It's called the storefront improvement program. Where we take existing businesses who wanna stay here, they have some financial hardships, and we help infuse them and help them for signage. There's a variety of categories that are, that fit into that. The EDC is such an integral part of our community. It needs to be maintained. And I'm a strong supporter of that, and I always vote for it.
All right, thank you. Next question is specific to Mr. Negerian and Ms. Volle, who are currently on council. Tell about a time when you voted in the minority on a council decision, and what was your position? So a time when you went against the grain. You can go.
Okay. A time that I voted was actually taking citizens to be heard, they used to have five minutes. Citizens to be heard would have five minutes, and normally, and which is, I'm sorry, but very sad, we don't have a lot of people showing up to city council meetings. I'd sure like to see, this would be fantastic. This would be fantastic. Normally, we get about that. But my position, they were switching it to three minutes, which they have. The mayor's always been generous about letting people go overtime, so that wasn't the big thing. My thought was, why switch it from five to three minutes? There's not a lot of times where we have, you know, huge, big issues that a lot of people are talking. If they wanna talk, put them in five minutes. If people need to be heard, I don't care if the meeting goes till 12 o'clock, midnight, or whatever time it goes to. So I, that was the one time that I definitely voted no on that. That was me, and I believe that was a bear goes me, who voted no on that. We weren't successful, but that was one of those times.
Well, I may have to be honest with you. I can't think of the exact occasion that I voted no. We do, we do hash things out for the longest time, and we usually come to an agreement. But I can't think of the specific example I know I have, but what can I say? Okay.
This next question is for everyone, and we'll start at this side of the table. It is kind of broad. What is one change, should you be elected, that you would like to make during your term?
One change during my term that I'd like to see? And I wouldn't necessarily call that a change. I would like to see more of you. For us to be responsive to your requirements, what your needs are, we need to hear from you. Yes, we can go meet you and all kinds of good things, but if you come to a council meeting, you have the ability then to address us. And I will tell you, and our city council members and even Adam can tell you this for sure, we have taken action based on the comments we get, or the citizens to be heard. All right? They come up with some comments that we do not, we're not aware of. And yet, we can take those comments and then potentially put that down as an agenda. Say, "We urge you, our instructions are to the city staff, let's talk about this. Let's come back," whether you have it as an action item or a discussion item. This is the input that we want and expect and hope to get from you all.
Well, basically, say, subject, not to one of you, but I would like to see, right here in this building, we've got a good crowd, I would like to see, once every month, maybe the second Friday of every month, from say 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., one council member can show up, sit down with the public, share what information they can, ask questions back and forth. That will be effective communication, and those who wanna know could actually find out. And for the council members, that's only requiring one or two extra meetings per year, if we just do it one at a time. All right? I don't think we need to be so scared of the Opens Meeting Act, so we can't get up, because what somebody tells me in private is not as good as what they'll say in public. Because they may tell me one thing and somebody else another thing. If they say it in public, I feel more confident that that's what they really mean.
Well, I think we need more of a community connection, and it kinda falls all on, everybody shoulders. With that said, we've got some nonprofits out here that are phenomenal. I know Parks Partners is one of them, you know? We've got a lot of organizations out here that do a lot of good things. We need to get more involved. But if I come to you and I say, "I wanna involve," and you tell me no, where do we miss here? You gotta get more involved, y'all. So I still like the festival ideal that some citizens brought up. I like getting involved with the community. Now, this is the way we can engage. This is the way we can tell them, "Hey, what are you thinking? What are you hearing there?" And then we don't have this three candidates sitting at one event going, "Uh-oh, we can't speak." We don't want that to happen. So engage with the community, and then come together and let's address certain circumstances. Where am I?
Yes, more communication with you, with you all. And, you know what I mean? Yes, more communication. I'd love to see lots more people at the meeting. I would love to get lots of phone calls and emails. Some more communication. I do wanna throw one thing, it's just slightly off-subject, but if you do come to a meeting and you address the council in the beginning, we can't talk back to you because it's not on the agenda, it's silly rules. But we can't answer your question. If you stay after the meeting, though, we can. And a whole lot of people go away a little bit disappointed because they didn't get their question answered. Stay after the meeting, and you will get your question answered. But definitely address it in the beginning. It helps a lot. It's really frustrating to know that we can't talk to you. Thanks, that's it.
I think one would be the transparency. I wanna kill all the citizens with data. You may not be as big of a nerd as I am. But I want you to be able to get nerdy like me if you want to. So if you wanna go through that, the biggest thing is that you have to be informed to be able to provide good feedback to the council. And if you're not informed, when you come to speak, you're not gonna have the data you need to make your argument, and so you need that data. So that's really, if I had to pick one thing, that would be just transparency.
I'm just gonna echo what the mayor said. We need, that's what I'd like to see changed. I would like to see a lot of people showing up at council meetings. With that said, if you can't, everybody has different schedules, and I know, I get things, "I wanted to show up, but I couldn't. I've got this and that going on." I understand that. Getting involved with the community. I sometimes, on hot-button issue, all of a sudden, my email just gets loaded up. But with that being said, all of a sudden, I don't hear from anybody forever. We have a way you can communicate with us, email, telephone, and we get all the great ideas from you, because then we represent you, the city. from you, because then we represent you, the city. I like what Mr. Edward said. I am scared of the open meetings act, because I have a six-year-old daughter, and I violate that open meetings act. I go to jail. It's not, it's not something that I shouldn't be a little weary of. I am. Us three together, three of us are together, we can discuss agenda information right here. But if you call me or get ahold of me by text or email, anyway we can, I can discuss that on my own. That's okay, and I would love to do that, and that's what should change.
I have the advantage of lots of time to think about my answer. I've already touched on streamlining the building permitting and inspection process. I'm sure that a lot of you have had issues with that, and you can sympathize or empathize. I think that, so I would work with the city manager to try to get that done. The other thing I would like to do, Anthony and AJ, thank you very much for videotaping. It shouldn't have to be you guys that are videotaping our city council meetings. I support the city making it more transparent, so that you can watch it through official channels and not have to watch it through the driving efforts of Anthony and AJ. To clarify, the Texas meeting, the open meetings act, we can talk with you as much as we want to. The only thing we can't do is Paul and I could not get together. If I was elected, Paul and I could not get together to discuss city business. Paul and I could get together, but we can't talk about city business. That does not restrict our ability to interact with you. Thank you. Thank you. Your mind.
I am pulling these blind. And since you said you had a lot of time to think about it, we're going to start there. And you're going to love this. If you could go back in time, how would you have handled the waste management contract?
First of all, I don't feel like I'm intimately familiar with all of the details, because I wasn't part of the contract negotiation. What I do know is that all of the waste management, all of the refuse collection companies in South Texas are moving to the automatic side loaders. You look at our neighboring communities that still have the smaller bins, that's only because their contracts haven't expired yet. If you go, if you went to a restaurant five years ago and you loved the lasagna, and you go back today and they say, sorry, that's no longer on the menu, is the restaurant obligated to make you some lasagna because you want it? Unfortunately, not. That's what happened with our waste management contract. They went to negotiate with waste management, and they said, sorry, small carts no longer on the menu. Alley service, no longer on the menu. I think personally, the city council did the best job that they could, negotiating in good faith with the situation that was given to them. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a real good question, and I've got a lot of glaring eyes on me now, because I am part of this council. Well, what he said is true. But this is something we were, with waste management and the other, the other companies as well, it's all going to automation. It's, you know, we've kicked this can down the road five, seven years. They said, well, what happens if we don't want to renew? It's like, okay, we'll go ahead and go through the end of our, we'll go through the end of our term, and we'll go our merrier way until we find somewhere else. And we'll even give two other companies, only one day a week. That was, that was a little brave for me. I'm not taking one day a week service for this. The big cans talking about 96 gallons. I fill up one on Monday, I probably don't fill anything up on a Thursday, but that's what, anything that can go in that can, will go in that can, as far as the rush or anything else. We negotiated, they want to give us two, we got quarterly rush pickups. Big 30-yard, big 30-yard containers to, on our city property, we do big pickups, which is thrown in through the maintenance department, because they, that they put in for that contract just to make it easier on us. But do I think it's a perfect? No, not at all. Am I happy to think it's the best plan? No, not at all. But that was the best one available to us. As far as I'm concerned, that's where my vote went.
I think this is a tough one. I know the council, I'm sure, did the best that they could, and they made the decision that they thought was the best. I don't envy them having to make that decision. But again, I think the problem was transparency. I think they should have explained what the options were. If it was a really bad option, and this was really, really was the best option, I think we could have all gotten around it and said, okay, we understand this, we don't like this, but we can live with it. But they didn't say really what, did waste management offer to do it for more money? I mean, if it's two or $3 more, would we be willing to pay? Maybe? If it's $15 more? Probably not. Maybe we would have made the same decision. But because we don't have any information about really what was the option, that's why I think there was so much angst about it, because it was just, here's a decision, it's already been signed, none of us really had a way to provide any input before it was done, or even knew that such a significant decision was being made. This was before they had the agenda packet included with the agenda. And if you read the agenda back from those meetings, obviously, it basically just says to consider it garbage ordinance. How are we even know that they're going to be talking about getting rid of alley service before making us have these giant cans? There's just no way.
Okay. I might get in trouble, but I can, I can handle those cans. Not a problem. I'm a little slow, not a problem. It is, you know, it is a little heavier. But, you know, I take it out like once every two weeks, so it's not a big deal. If you do have problems with that, call City Hall, ask for the city manager, and she can help you. And that's where I might get in trouble. I'll tell her, do you know what I did to her? Okay. One question that comes around a lot is losing jobs. No, the waste management workers will not lose a job. They're just like everybody else, looking for employees. So they're not, you know, there's no reason to job under this. Okay, yeah, it could be handled better. Agreed. But again, communication, this one is on my stuff. Okay, thanks.
Well, I can attest to some of this too, because 2011, 2015, I was actually on the board, and we actually negotiated with waste management, talked with them way back then. And the one question I posed to them was, okay, so if things change, are you going to go look? Is that what's going to happen? And the answer I got kind of fulfilled my answer. He said, no. Well, in that time frame now, that's 2011 to 2015, that's what took place then. And then I see now what transpired was, times change, we have to evolve, because we're going to think safety, we're going to think limit our, and one thing I am a firm believer in, a person's as good as their word. I feel that wholeheartedly. You tell me something, you better adhere to that. Times change, come to me, not just me, the citizens first, and ask them, more so, over and over again. Now, if a lovely lady can run around and get a property cap tax for senior citizens, guess what? We can get other things done together. So that's just what I feel. We should have done a better job and better at it. That's just, I feel we pulled it short on it.
When it comes to the waste management contract, I think we should address the elephant in the room. I'm going to answer that question. And were I on the city council, the first thing I would have done was tabled the contract and demand bidding. Why did we get a contract of this size without official bidding from other companies? If waste management wants to do this, or waste management wants to do that, well, what does Republic want to offer? What does TID want to offer, or anybody else? And then after doing a formal reading of the bids, we could then present it to the public in a way where they actually know, and let the city decide, well, we can keep our alleyway service, we can have smaller cans, but they're only going to pick up trash once a week. Okay? Who are six people to make such a big decision for everybody else without really getting involved and making sure they know? Okay? That's the hill I die on. That's what's got me up here right now. Thank you.
These are all very good statements, very good comments. I hear, I hear everyone. I will tell you that your council spent countless, countless hours looking at this potential contract. We knew we were not going to be able, they knew they were not going to be able to satisfy everybody. It's never going to happen. It can't satisfy everybody. We, in our best, our best interest of all of you, helped make this decision. And it was a five-to-one vote. It was not a unanimous decision. It was a deliberation that took a long, long time. We did have input from some citizens, not a great amount. I think if we can continue to have forums like this, these kinds of issues will be resolved. We'll know more about your total feelings, but there may still be something that we cannot do about it. Let me tell you, one positive thing about waste management that you may not know, is that spring and fall cleanup we have every year at our public works department, yes, provides all the bins for waste management. And they provide as many as we need. It's important for you to understand it. Yes, everything that is happening in this country may not be an effective, not for all of you, but for the majority of you, your council felt that this was the best possible contract that we could possibly have. This is pride, and I will tell you, many of the, we researched this, many of the other cities that have waste management as their supplier, we had a fantastic contract, overall excellent contract. The price that we, and you pay, we pay, is very, very, very good, in terms of what the services that they provide for us.
All right, looking in a slightly different direction. In the interest of possibly lowering property taxes, would you be in favor of feasibility study regarding sharing firefighting services with an adjacent city? Sorry, this is.
Sharing firefighting services with.
Not, I'm sure it's not the reciprocal agreements intended here, but actually just combining forces.
Well, that's, that's a good question, and it's a tough one for, I think, for anybody to answer. We have great agreements right now with our other sister cities, and sometimes if there's a fire, we may not even be the first one there, and it takes place in Universal City. One of our other cities may have been there first. Those interlocal, those agreements that we have with them, very cooperative. As far as should we potentially do it with different personnel? It's a good question. Come here, it's a very good question. I think it's important to have your own system, to work within your own system. We have to budget together to self, to share limits on something like this, like fire rate in our police department, can be very, very difficult to do. I think we've got, we've got a workable system right now, that everyone's, with, we have a phenomenal police department, we have a phenomenal fire department, and they work together, and they cooperate with each other. And I think that's important.
There's not much more serious than your house being on fire. To answer the question, no.
So my opinion on this, first and foremost, is I don't want to entertain taking away any funds whatsoever. I'm an avid supporter of my police, my fire department, my EMS. If they're going to risk their lives for me, I'm going to do everything I can to get them the funds they need, figure bottom up. So entertaining taking any funds away, I'm not going to do it. Now, as far as cooperative, we've already been doing it. This is not a new design. We've already done it. Ask shirts, ask, merit attest to it, big time. And we've got some phenomenal calls out there. These people have gone above and beyond to help. So I'm an avid supporter on, let's do what we can to get them a little bit more, get going. I agree with y'all. First and foremost, let's make it happen.
Like the mayor said, it already happens. When there is a fire in the local area, everybody goes to Livock, Salma, everybody comes and helps us, or vice versa. I think you've noticed your ambulance are from shirts, and we use that, and we pay a lot of money for that. Police, I, just from attending the police academy, I learned that there's a SWAT team in the general area, and they all work together. We've got two on it, Livock has two on it, et cetera. So we do kind of work together. Consider, if we were to send the entire fire department to Livock, they would have to have more equipment, they would take more people, they would have to expand their building, and who, who's going to pay for that? We are. So it's a good place.
There's some other cities that do this in Perry County, and they kind of get in the squabbles about who's paying their fair share, and do you do it based on how many calls there have been? That's how you allocate it? Or you just do it based on the number of citizens? So you're going to get in some disputes if you try to do agreements like that, and I don't think getting a local control is good. But the worst thing we can do as a city, which I've heard several times, is we've always done it this way, so we're going to do it this way. We should be open-minded to new ideas and at least consider them. But I don't think this idea would be probably a good one.
Yeah, I think it's a feasibility study. Yes, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but at the same time, I don't think that's the answer. I, anything that's a possibility, our fire department is one of the best around. And like, echoing everybody else here, we already worked in cooperation. So Mr. Holywater, my, my answer was, we work with shirts on our ambulance, which is, we've got a great contractor, they've been great for this city, and there's no reason to do something on our own, the way it's been working out. As far as fire is concerned, if there's even a possibility that something gets confused or anything else, and we lose out on just a couple of seconds of time going for emergency, I would say that's two seconds too much for any situation, and I do not favor that.
I had a lot of time to think about my answer. Here, my answer is yes. Cooperative agreements between the fire departments? Absolutely. Human life is the most precious thing we have. If you live off of Gibbs Brawl Road or Old Simran Trail, do you care who comes to put out your fire? If your house is burning? Absolutely not. If the residents of Livock, do they care who comes to put out their fire? If we can get there faster, we need to go. If somebody from Converse can get to Gibbs Brawl Road or Old Simran Trail? Absolutely. Yeah, there's going to be some disputes potentially, but we got to work it out. We have to prioritize the speed with which our first responders can get there to put out the emergency, whatever it is. Thank you.
Listen, on Thanksgiving, we had a house fire on our street, and there were four different cities who sent personnel to take care of that fire. That was a huge lesson. Next question. Council says they listen to the citizens, but they do not. If you were elected, how will you change this? And let's move up, let's start with you.
I've already said I propose to meet somewhere in Universal City, maybe the Dog Park, maybe Red Horse Park, something like that, on a regular basis, on a recurring meeting, on the Saturday or Sunday before the city council meeting. I would encourage you to read through the agenda packets, ask for clarification. I would do my best to communicate with you. I encourage everybody to come to the meetings and the citizens to be heard, but also after the meetings. If you disagree with or agree with something that you heard during the city council meeting, let us know. We have to be able to hear from you. We make ourselves available, but it's also incumbent upon the residents to come forward, say what they have to say. We have to be receptive and respectful to your opinions and honestly engage with you. Thank you.
On the council, I have, like everybody else, I have a job that I normally go to, work a lot of hours, but I've always made myself available. I've gone to other meetings, like I say, Northeast Partnership meetings, I've gone to the Tri-City. I know the mayors, I know the councilmen, and we talk, and you can always get things from other cities that help. Sister cities are very important. It's all, the biggest thing is ran off Air Force Base. We are the gateway to ran off Air Force Base. Probably just kind of lost my train of thought there. But at the same time, I don't mind making myself available. I miss days of work, because I'm working for the city, and I think I need to be in function, or I, you know, I need to do something that pertains to that. I don't mind that. Best response to that, I took off when I first ran. I always tell people, this is the best job I've ever had, that I don't get paid for.
I think the biggest frustration is no two-way communication. So people come and you make your comments, like the council can't respond to you at the meeting, so then you feel not heard, and then they don't act on what you said, or even give you feedback. So the big.
So the biggest thing is, if I'm allowed to, I would like you to email me, and I will respond to you. We're not gonna always agree, but I'm gonna give you what my point of view is so that we understand each other. And if we understand each other, then we're gonna be more willing to accept whatever decisions are made. I'm also gonna come to the meetings early so that you can tell me what your feedback is on the agenda, because it's the most important time that you can give your feedback before the decision is made. And I can give you my feedback before the council meeting, so we can hopefully come to some understanding of each other. That's what I'm gonna say.
Actually, I kind of liked Richard's idea of a council member night every Saturday night. I think that would be a really good way to get communication going. And yes, emails. Come to the meetings. And stay after the meeting if you have a citizen's free comment, so we can talk to you again.
Well, I think I'm gonna break every rule out here. Okay? It's called, my phone number's 210-685-9110. My email's adam@gaga.com. When I get a city email, you'll have it. I live at 125 Furlong Drive. You now know all my information. Feel free to call me, come to my house, knock on the door, do what you need to, email, send a pitch, and I don't care. Get involved with us. Okay? As being a mayor, I'm gonna be more than just this person that you're gonna see. This is a full-time job for me. I'm gonna be out here all day long. You're gonna get sick of seeing this face. A lot of y'all probably already are. So, with that said, I just want y'all to get out and get involved. Come to these meetings, come let us know. We've got committees. That's where y'all can fit very much so. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, to whoever wrote that, I politely respectfully disagree. They do listen. I know, because sometimes in their comments, they tell me what they thought of what I said. The question is, do they heed what we say? Okay? Do they value it? The best way around it, and thank you, Beverly, for reinforcing this. Obviously, it's not a violation of Open Meetings Act. If one representative per month, they could be set up, they could be here. I'm suggesting a second Friday of every month, from seven to nine P.M. People could show up with their issues. Hopefully, the council member knows who's coming down the pike that he can still talk about. They can share information. People can have back and forth and work it out. And then, of course, you can just go one-on-one after council.
These are all very good comments. I tend to agree with every one of you. The number one thing that we need from you guys is feedback. And if we have learned anything tonight in this forum, we realize that there needs to be more and more of that feedback. We need to know how you feel. If you choose not to come to a council meeting for a variety of reasons, and you understand that, that's okay. But if you have something that you're passionate about, you want us to be aware of, you can get ahold of it. My phone number, Adam. I give my own, everybody's own phone number. And I got many, 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 many calls from y'all. We dropped the home phone number because of the fact that the...
I got you.
We're cellphones now. But I agree with them on that. That's the way to do it. We wanna be as possible transparent and as possible candid with all of you, and your feedback is critically important to us. For us to be able to represent you on council, we need to know how you feel. And this is a great forum, and I think this is a great, I think it's a tremendous idea, to get together, often, often, you wouldn't wanna call it an open meeting or a special meeting, or whatever. Just an opportunity to sit down and talk with it. You need to read it if you wanna call it that, whatever. I think that would be very good, I believe.
We have about six minutes left for questions, and I managed to pull two more on the waste management contract. So you're gonna ask me to keep your answers down to a single word. The first one is a yes/no question, and Williams will start with you. Please, guys, in his ball, just say yes or no. Do you support the new garbage system?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
If you trust me, I know there is a desire to elaborate, but I also know that we've already spent some time on that already. This one also, it's a two-part question. Again, they're both essentially yes/no questions. The first one is, again, are you in favor of the new garbage collection system? I believe you just answered that. Y'all would like to hear them all say yes and no. And the second one is, are you aware that no other companies were asked to bid? Yes or no? And I'm not aware of whether that's a true statement or not, but that is the question. Are you aware that no other companies were asked to bid for... Mr. Buck?
Before we start, Mr. Buck?
Yes. Yes.
My understanding is there was no bidding?
Yes.
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 Unanimous.
There you go. All right, and this will be our last question, because then we're gonna take a couple minutes with each candidate to summarize. And it says, why did the administrative budget increase forty percent in this latest budget? Let's start on this end.
Okay, the interesting thing, why did the administrative budget increase? There was some consolidation done as we worked on this budget this past year. Some of the funds were moved from one category to another category. So yes, the administrative funds supposedly increased, but they were moved from a different part of the budget. And it would be really difficult to... Twenty more seconds to try to explain that to you. But here's another sample for you. When we start having our budget meetings, come on to the meetings. You'll be amazed at what the staff is already working on this next year's budget already. They'll be presenting it to the new council, probably in May or June or July, depends on how long it takes. But your council, your staff is already working on that budget right now, right now.
I have no idea. Mr. Buck?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, first and foremost, I was running for state rep, so I was continually involved with that. But as far as the budget, I do read, I do get involved, and we look at the H.R.I. plan. I haven't been consumed here, because I've been running. I've been always trying to help this city. And I haven't stopped. So, moving forward, I champion an effort to get y'all more involved, and especially in this budget process. We're gonna need brilliant minds like you. I'm dead serious. We need people like you to help us through this. So that's all I can say.
The difference is, they took the phone bill from the different activities and put it in administration. The internet, just those little administrative-type charges are now in administration. That's it.
I have no idea. We'll just have to address what they said.
Back on what the mayor said, it is pretty complicated, but to make it easier, that's like this communication. Do you have, like she brought up, who Mr. Holybuck? Communications, each department would have, like, a cellphone or this phone, or computers and everything. And we've trimmed line, the city has trimmed line the budgeting process, so things were moved over. So it looks like, you know, it looks like the golf course is getting all this extra money. It's not. It's the same money, it's just in the general fund, and all of a sudden, it gets transferred out. So when the new budget came out, we've categorized things into different spots to make it easier. And right now, we're gonna start working with that. Sometimes you start swimming in this budget. I'm anxious to see how this really works out as far as people being able to understand it before. Before, it was just numbers everywhere. But it has been trimmed line, and that's where a lot of the confusion comes in. It wasn't actually forty percent that it happened. The people that worked for the city got a three percent pay raise. There wasn't a whole lot of money spent, other than that.
Categories were shuffled around. If all you look at is the administrative budget and ignore the other portions of the budget, then you're, yeah, the budget went up by forty percent, whatever the number was. But you have to look at the other categories and determine, did those other categories go down as well? Let's look at the overall cost of the budget and not focus on one specific area. You have to do a holistic analysis of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, especially for sticking pretty much to our timelines.
See, could I just, there's been a lot of talk about business, waste management. Nothing has been mentioned about the impact of the community comment to you?
And we are out of time, Mr. Wurman. And I apologize for that. There's about twenty cards in here we didn't get to. Those of you who submitted a question that didn't get answered, I encourage you to contact each of the candidates individually. Most of us would like to be getting home by nine, and so we're just gonna have to wrap it up. And your job, having attended, is to go home, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends who live in Universal City. Clearly, many of you will form some opinions tonight. Make your time here, you're more valuable by sharing that with your neighbors and your friends within the city. We'll start with Mr. Buck on that end. Two minutes each to summarize your positions.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may be thanking us for coming out here tonight so that you could hear us. As I said at the beginning, I thank you for coming out here to share your thoughts with us. I'm gonna stick around here for at least thirty to forty-five minutes until nobody else wants to talk to me anymore. I wanna hear from you guys again, so if you wanna stick around afterwards, I encourage you to do so. I came to this city in 2016, and I chose to live in Universal City because of all the good things I heard about it. I am not disappointed one bit. I do not wanna live anywhere else. I had to make the decision, are the services that are available in this city worth it for me? Is the movie worth the price of admission regarding property taxes? And I still say that's a resounding yes. I wanna attract those businesses, increase the revenue, increase the sales tax. That will ultimately lower property taxes. I'll keep it short, ladies and gentlemen. I really appreciate you all coming out here tonight to listen to what we have to say. I'm gonna stick around to listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
Reader, when he said, I'd like to thank you all for coming out here, because this is the type of involvement we need on a constant basis. There's, I, just, in the couple minutes that we had on our break, I heard some fantastic ideas that never been presented to me before that I wanna start talking to people about and seeing what we can do about that. Mr. Legoheart, thank you very much for putting us together. As you know, I was reluctant at first, and this is very good. This is very good, the way you put it. And I respect, you and I disagree on a lot of things. But we've also talked, you and I disagree on a lot of things. But I respect the fact that you show up, and you're out there, and you do what needs to be done. And so much respect for that. As far as, this is, I'm in my, end of my second term. It took a first term to start getting that budget in my head. When I first took office, and the budget meeting came up right off the bat, I started seeing these numbers, and I was saying, oh my God. I have bit off more than I can chew. I have no idea, I'm gonna let people down. And this is a Peter Principle, and also the staff, everybody, was very generous with their time explaining things to me. And once things started coming into fashion, I figured out, you know, what's going. It's a little intimidating at first. We do the best job we can. I've been on commissions. I have worked with this city voluntarily. I love this city. This is where I'm gonna retire. So I have a vested interest. Some of the decisions that we make, or some of the decisions are of my vote, sometimes are things that affect me dramatically or, you know, in a bad way. But it's for the whole city as a whole. I keep that in mind at all times. Not just thinking five, again, ten, twenty, thirty years down the line, supporting Randolph Air Force Base, keeping us off the short list of closures, because that, besides the business, is absolutely the backbone of this community. And I ask you, now that I've got my training wheels off, and I really feel that I know what I'm doing, I ask for your vote for a third term. Thank you.
We're probably all gonna be a broken record, but thank you, Kim, and thank you, everybody, for coming. When I decided to run, this was really what I wanted. I wanted to share my ideas and have you guys judge me on those ideas. And if you like them, vote for me. If you don't, that's okay, too. But I just hope that you judge me on the merit of my ideas and what I might be able to bring to the council. And if you like that, then please vote for me. If you think a government auditor would be helpful on the council, I'm your man. If you're scared of some of my ideas, if you really don't like my idea about the EDC, just keep in mind, I would only be one council member, and you would get ultimate deciding factor on that, on the sales tax election. I think it takes all kinds to make a good council. You don't want everybody to be of the same mind and have the same opinion, that everybody should keep doing the same thing. And so you need some differing opinion. So even if you're a very big EDC, I would recommend that you vote somebody in who might have a dissenting opinion just to keep it in check. So, please vote for me. As Buck said, I'll be around here, too, and I have some cards. I have a website, you can go online, I can give you questions. Or if you just think I'm an idiot, and you wanna hash it out with me, it's okay, too. So I'd be happy to hear from you. But thank you for coming tonight and for listening.
I kinda took notes and stole a lot of you guys' ideas. I appreciate this meeting. And I've been hearing from other folks, too. But the other thing I wanna say, we have hired a grant writer, and it's on board. And we are close to filming meetings. We're getting there. That is big goal. Back to waste management. To keep those trucks in the alley, we would have to pave the alley. And we would have to pave it as an official road. We'd have to have all that expense to pave those alleys. And we were also told that a worker was killed. He was working in the back of a truck, and a girl was coming up, and she was texting on her phone, and he was killed. And I think she's going to jail. Just a little tidbit, I've got here. Now, yes, Randolph Air Force Base, we must just take care of that. And as the only woman, we need to consider that. We need women, we have to send in women.
All right, y'all. Okay, my name's Adam Saudi. I'm a government graduate from the University of Carnegieburg. I've had fourteen years Army. Injuries cut me short. With that said, I couldn't just sit down and say, no, I'm not doing anything. Well, coming out the Army, I was actually in a wheelchair. Well, coming out of the Army, I was actually in a wheelchair. I had to fight my way back into it. So I have stared down the face of adversity, kept moving forward, kept doing stuff here and there and everywhere, trying to do what I can to make this better. Now, again, I've got my wife and four boys. My nephew and my son, actually, I love them to death, because they actually got out, and they'll put those chairs out today. So I was very happy with that. Again, thank everyone for coming. I'm gonna keep reiterating that, because this is where it's at. Y'all need to understand that technically, I don't have a vote in this. Mayor don't have a vote in this. We sit back. These are the backbone of what your voting's gonna be, this council right here. So we need to elect these fine people to give us the tools we need to be a face, to be a voice, to allocate, to do what we need to. Now, you addressed the college. Well, that comes right into events. Why not go to the college? It's a champion effort. Why not say this? We got an airshow coming to Randolph Air Force Base. A lot of us don't even know it. We have to champion these efforts to let people know what's coming. And make us the destination. We are gateway to Randolph Air Force Base. Embrace that. Now, all of these businesses and stuff, we have to find creative ways to make them grow, to do what we can. And again, I can't do this alone. I need y'all's help. We've got some brilliant minds here. I've said that time and time again, till I'm blue in the face. But I can't leave this until I thank God for putting me in this way. So with that said, thank you.
I'm running for city council, because I don't feel, well, I sure don't feel I was being represented. And it just seems to me that not a whole lot of us are. And maybe it's just a lack of communication back and forth, but there doesn't seem like there's a lot of effort to do that. I think the people on the council right now are good people. I admire them all, but I gotta say, I disagree with things. This election, we've got four new faces, run for city council and for mayor. I am asking you for your vote, not just for me, but for all four of us. Thank you.
Well, it has been a pleasure. I applaud all of my colleagues who've sat here this evening. This is a great forum. Really appreciate that. And to Mr. Wollinger, I've had the pleasure of working with the Alamo Community College over the years. And I will say that, if you wanna know one thing that I really, really, really worked hard on, it was trying to convince the Alamo Community College District to put a college in our area here. And we, you know, we told them, just like Field of Dreams, build it, and they will come. And we really worked hard at it, and persevered, and finally got the district to agree to that. And what you see now is the fruition of that phenomenal campus. By the way, it's in both Livock and Universal City, but it carries a Universal City address. The Livock mayor always gets mad at me occasionally, so I go, Uncle, I've got more Livock than Universal City does. The point is, we all share that. The interesting thing is, they're gonna have some, an actual, I talked to Dr. Garcia, the president, yesterday. And very interesting, what they're gonna do is put some signs on some of the front roads. This is interesting, on some of the roads, say, you are now leaving Universal City, you're going into Livock. You're now leaving Livock. Just as a way to explain it. But I just wanted to say one other quick thing. The years that I served, I've served proud, and I'm honored to have been your mayor. I have loved every council member that I have had a chance to work with, every single one of them. Adam was clearly a good councilman for four years with us. And the incumbents are doing well. And I think each one of these individuals really definitely has a desire to serve their city to the best of their ability. And if you reelect me, I will continue to do what I believe is the most important thing, and that is to be your positive representative with the military, with other city officials. We've established a great relationship with our sister communities, and I think it's important for us to remember that. And the only other thing I wanna say is that, I'll give a shout-out like Adam did. It's called a shout-out, the airshow's the 23rd and 24th of April, and everybody's invited to come, and they expect it to be one of the best airshows that the Air Force has ever put on. So, thank you very much. Mr. Ligo Hart, thank you for what you've done here this evening. It's been a very worthwhile, interesting experiment tonight. Thank you.
Do you have any final comments? I just made a spontaneous decision. Those of you familiar with the Nextdoor app? When I take the remaining questions, one a day, throw them up there on the UC Government group. If you're not a part of it, join it. Live discussions, and I'm inviting all candidates.
I'll try not to get sensory.
All candidates will be invited to give your answer to the remaining questions. If you have an empty plastic bottle, if you would please deposit it in here, I'll take it home and recycle it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to say thank you for a great job.
Thank you all for coming. It's very nice. Thank you.